All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have the time at seven forty-one. And this might be a repeat for some of you. We are glad to have you tonight. And that involved citizenry is the foundation of our democracy. It's probably important. I would love that this room would be just like this every month. Unfortunately, that is not the case. It's only when we have gravel pit things or budgets or things like that. But I would encourage you to please stay involved. If you used to come to the meetings, please come back. Second Tuesday of every month, seven o'clock. When you came in the door tonight, there are signup sheets. One of them is just for your attendance in, thank you. We have somebody pointing it out back there. There's one for your, just your attendance. There is also a sheet for citizens' concerns for this June Board of Alderman meeting. Please sign up to there. When you get to the citizens' concern court, that is where we will be going down that list. We also have some meeting questions that have been submitted. As I said previously, during the citizens' concerns, we will limit you, because everybody wants to have a say, we'll limit you to two minutes of speaking. I would ask that you would please keep it civil. Address your questions to me. That doesn't mean that there might be a board member or town staff that will help get you an answer for your question. All right. We are now going to open our meeting with a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you wish to participate, I would ask that you stand at this time. Brother Steve Carpenter, pastor of Gateway Baptist Church, is going to lead us in our prayer tonight. And then afterwards, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Brother Steve.
Mayor thinks y'all showed up for the budget meeting tonight. Thank you for showing up for my message. Just a moment. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for the opportunity to come before you, before this meeting. Thank you for the freedom that we have to do that, freedom to talk to you, freedom to worship. Lord, we know that your word tells us that if we trust in you completely, we don't lean on our own understanding, if we acknowledge you in all of our ways, that you would direct our paths. We know that's true for our lives, so we'll help us to seek you with all of our hearts. Lord, we, we know that your word tells us that you place within us as your followers, your spirit that gives love and joy and peace and patience and kindness, gentleness, goodness, faithfulness, self-control. What all these things that you want to provide, and what I pray that we would live our lives that way with our neighbors, that we live our lives that way each day as we encounter others. Father, thank you for our public servants, those on this board that serve well, police, fire, those that put their lives on the line day in and day out, for the people that live in this town. What an incredible blessing, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to live in a place like this. Father, you told us that if we asked for wisdom, that you would always give it. So what I pray for wisdom for everybody in this room, I pray for wisdom for the mayor, for this board, for everyone that loves and is concerned about our town. What I pray for your wisdom and your guidance in all things. Thank you for loving us and loving us in Christ. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Town Recorder, I have the time at seven forty-six. Today is June, Tuesday, June thirteenth. Please give us roll call.
Mayor Aikich.
Here.
Alderman Shaker.
Here.
Alderman Renfro.
Here.
Alderman Giannini.
Here, ma'am.
Alderman Feldmayer.
Here.
Alderman Harber.
Here.
Alderman Fats.
Here.
We do have a quorum this evening, and we would start with Exhibit A in your agenda, minutes from our regular board meeting of May ninth.
I make a motion to amend the minutes from the May ninth meeting for Resolution twenty-three dash oh-five dash oh-two, Exhibit G, to reflect that the audit services begin, beginning date for fiscal year July first, twenty-twenty-two, and ending date June twenty-twenty-three. We're in fact correct.
That is what is in the minutes?
What's in the minutes is twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
So correct it to twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
I have a motion to accept the minutes for the May ninth meeting with the corrections that Alderman Feldmayer has stipulated. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting the minutes in the record, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are accepted. Exhibit B in your packet was our special call of board meeting that was held on May twenty-third, where we had our first reading of the town budget.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Feldmayer to accept the minutes for the May twenty-third special call meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any opposed to, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And those are also accepted into record. We have our financial report. Exhibit C in your packet, Mr. Town Administrator. And if you would look on your monitors, you will see what we're going over tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief overview of the financial report. So you have general fund revenues through the eleventh month of the fiscal year, total revenues at seven point one-three-two million. Expenditures also reflect a total amount of six points, six point two-six million. So excess revenue over expenditures, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, and our cash on hand at the end of the period is six point four-eight million. Our state street aid fund, three hundred nineteen thousand in revenue, eighty-six thousand in expenditures, excess revenue over expenses, two hundred thirty-two thousand. Still have some cash on hand at the end of, beginning of the year, two hundred thirty-three is where we started, and at the end of the year, at the end of the period, rather, four hundred sixty-six thousand. So what we spend in that money is, as folks have seen, some roadwork being done. Likely that will carry over into the new fiscal year as well. Drug fund, we haven't spent anything so far this year, but we do have thirty-three thousand in revenue and cash on hand at the end of the period, it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Our solid waste collections revenues are at six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, expenditures at five hundred and twenty-one thousand. So we've got cash on hand at the end of the period of two hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Our ARPA funds, which is something we started a few months back, so that the board can be tracking how the ARPA funds are spent according to their spending plan, we've got two hundred and eight thousand in expenditures, and we still have about two point six million remaining to spend to those funds. And investment of funds, again, we're being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars by trying to earn as much interest as we can. You can see through the end of the period, we've earned ninety-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars of interest. And then in the column just to the right of that, you can see eighty-seven thousand that will mature once we get some CD maturities. On our water fund, our revenues for water is one point two-six-six million, and our expenditures are one point one-nine-zero million. So we've got a positive income of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. And on our sewer fund, we have, revenues are one point three-nine million, and our total expenses are one point four-five million. So we still have a fifty-three thousand four hundred and forty dollar deficit, and total for all funds, eleven million four eighteen four seventy. So our comparison that we've been providing to the board since, I believe it was August of last year, you can see that we've got several months here outlined on your screen so we can track month-to-month expenses, our month-to-month revenues. So this is just a tool that we're using to track those revenues and expenditures over the course of time. General sales tax revenue, so we've seen a little increase in our sales tax revenue of six point four percent. So again, these numbers run about sixty days behind. We've seen a difference, so same month last year, we were one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. This same month this year, we're one hundred and forty-six thousand, so about nine thousand dollar difference there. And on our fire tax revenue, similar numbers, six point eight-four percent increase, about four thousand dollar increase in revenues on your fire tax revenue. Be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
I have a second. Motion by Alderman Feldmayer, second by Alderman Giannini. All in favor of accepting June financial report in the record, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Financial report is accepted. Exhibit D, old business tonight. We have the final consideration of amending our twenty-twenty-three town budget. One of the ladies that talked was talking about how do we do that? And this is where we will be amending our twenty-three budget. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. As required, the allocations are not going to meet budgeted expenditures, and if there's going to be an amendment to go over those expenditures, there's a requirement by state statute that we need to amend the budget. So that ordinance is before you. You can see that we've got a judicial adjustment from sixteen thousand two hundred to seventeen thousand two hundred, and then fire is two point zero-three million to two point zero-eight million. Solid waste fund from six fifty-five to seven nineteen, and then our drug fund from fifty-seven thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand on the amended budget.
Any objections to reading this ordinance by title on? Mayor Ngung, Mr. Town Recorder, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, amending section three of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero-six dash zero-two related to approved expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two, and ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Make a motion, exhibit D be approved.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Alderman Renfro. This is a ordinance, so we will do a roll call vote. Alderman Pace.
Yes.
Alderman Harbor.
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer.
Yes.
Alderman Giannini.
Yes.
Alderman Renfro.
Yes.
Alderman Shaker.
Yes.
The motion carries. Exhibit D passes. Next business, as far as old business, exhibit E in your packet, this is adopting the fiscal twenty-twenty-four town, but Mr. Town Administrator, do you have a presentation?
I do.
Yes.
Lots of interest in this tonight, so I appreciate the citizens' interest in questions. They're very valuable. And we're going to try to provide some clarity for folks and additional information. So we've got a presentation here about the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget. So what were the steps in the budget process? So we determined the needs for each of the departments, and the department heads brought those needs forward as we made some preliminary decisions. Then we had departmental meetings, which began February two thousand twenty-three. We met about every other week through that course of time to today. Then we had finance and administration committee meetings, which were two board liaisons on there and open to the public. And we had a couple of board, mayor, and Alderman work sessions also open available to the public, which brings us to tonight with a public hearing and a final budget consideration.
So, Mr. Administrator, I believe we had at least three finance and administration committee meetings?
Yes, sir. I'm going to show those to you right now.
Go ahead.
So we've had meetings throughout. All these meetings were open to the public. We had finance and administration committee on April the fourth. We had finance and administration committee on April the eighteenth. We had two board work sessions, one on May the second, another one on May the sixteenth. We had the first reading of the budget on May twenty-third, and that brings us to tonight for a public hearing and board, mayor, and Alderman meeting. All those meetings were open to the public, and we had, we had provided that schedule to the board back in February of what the tentative schedule was going to be for the budget creation process. So we had finance committee budget recommendations. That's how these, these items moved forward, you know, as we created the budget and started to put numbers to paper. So there was a couple of items, MS four plan, which is municipal separate storm sewer system. So it's, it's stormwater related. We recommend proceeding with a planned draft and a draft ordinance. And we, we have an item for the fee schedule, so we're addressing that item. Our splash pad entrance fees to support operations, daily and annual passes. We also had industrial development board component to add for the initial funding of the industrial development board. We've achieved that, and, and here's where maybe some of the confusion has come in, is the property tax rate in the memo a while back was a dollar twenty-four per one hundred dollars assessed. Part that I think most folks missed was ore equivalent revenue to fund the proposed budget. And the reason it was ore equivalent revenue is because we had gotten word about the reassessment and the certified tax rate, so that's why I was worried the way that it was worried. For those that don't know, we've got several departments. We've got police and fire, finance and administration, parks and rec, public works, and planning and inspection departments. Some of the budget ideas and needs for the police department were the addition of three police officers to supplement our current staff, calls, calls for service by the community are trending upwards, about thirteen point six percent overall. Uniform and equipment costs and increase in allotment for officers, new hires, and just uniform costs in general have increased significantly. New flock camera support and body worn camera support, so the flock cameras, license plate readers essentially. We needed to upgrade that flock camera software, which is very helpful when it comes to knowing who's coming in and out of the county. And then Intrinsic is the name of the company for the body worn camera software that needed upgrades. Our tasers and mobile printers, our current taser models are at the end of their life and will not continue to be supported, so they do require a replacement. And currently, we have five printers. We need a printer in each patrol unit, which is approximately twenty-five. And the methodology that you're going to see throughout this presentation is the important recruitment and retention of qualified staff, as everybody from all walks of life, if you're in a job, you know it's very difficult to recruit folks and retain folks that are qualified to do the job. The fire department, so we are proposing to add two additional firefighters. Building the staff will provide for efficient operation of the new aerial apparatus, which is on order and we should have in the very near future. It requires three firefighting personnel to operate that piece of equipment, and we do not have that currently at both stations. So adding the two additional firefighters will increase that personnel strength so that we have the adequate personnel to run and operate the equipment. That will also get us to a point where we can eventually run two trucks out of station one, and that's going to help build our ISO points as we work towards a class one fire rating, which benefits all the town residents and their insurances. Capital improvement items, a perennial favorite, so we're going to replace one of the early warning sirens, so that would leave us one that we should be able to operate and replace the, the final fifth siren in budget year twenty-five, and then begin funding the new fire apparatus replacement over the next nine years, sixty-five thousand dollars per year. And again, recruitment and retention of qualified staff. Our public works department, we're adding two additional public works technicians to the department, and adding the staff creates additional coverage for projects that we can get to in a shorter amount of time, which benefits all residents, provide more consistent maintenance of grounds and streets. We've also increased the road and street construction and maintenance budget from the, the current budget of three hundred thousand dollars. We've increased that to three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the new proposed budget. We'll also have to allocate seventy-five thousand towards the replacement of the Tipton Road Bridge, and that's going to have to continue probably for the next three years. So we, those who were active in those discussions early on, we did about a five-year repair to the Tipton Road Bridge. It was a temporary repair. So we're, we're planning for the replacement of the Tipton Road Bridge. Again, recruitment and retention, qualified staff. Our parks and rec department, so we're adding one additional staff member in parks and rec. There, the parks and rec department, they're currently operating with four full-time employees, only four full-time employees. Comparable towns are running eight or more staff for similar sized town. Our splash pad, our repairs will be supplemented by entrance fees, and notice it said supplemented, not completely covered. There's always going to be some, some component there that we're, we're going to continue to work to make sure that the splash pad is properly maintained. We've got the scout hut, which is going to address some of the building repair needs for the Boy Scouts camps and classes, which are run by the parks and rec department, and also might create some rental opportunities for additional streams of revenue. Internet and Wi-Fi, we are moving Wi-Fi and internet into all of the parks locations, so that's Pioneer, that's Nancy, that's Walker. We use Wi-Fi, it's needed for concessions. So also, we've been having, some might be paying attention to a little bit of vandalism in some of the parks, so it will also allow us to be adding security cameras through Wi-Fi and monitoring things through that as well. And then when folks are visiting, they might be visiting the splash pad or enjoying the parks in another form, then we've got guest Wi-Fi option, we hope to be able to extend. And always, recruitment and retention, qualified staff. Our finance and administration department, planning and inspection departments, one additional staff member for finance and admin. Those are, the folks are going to be on the front lines and are on the front lines daily with town business. These people will help, this person will also help to be cross-trained in all aspects, but also with accounts payable and receivables. Planning and inspection, we've added an additional ten thousand dollars for planning consulting and initial funding, which was mentioned earlier, but we were able to identify a hundred thousand dollars to begin funding the industrial development board as a loan to the industrial development board. Formal legal documents would be drawn up so that that is recognized as a loan, and the industrial development board would pay the, the general fund back over the course of time. And then we are, are also applying fifty thousand dollars towards our long-range comprehensive plan, the TOTW contract twenty-fourty-two. I'm sure as engaged as the folks are in this room, a lot of them participated in the surveys for the comprehensive plan and provided some community input. And then recruitment and retention, qualified staff. The ARPA funding, which is in the form of a grant, we had to identify the revenues and the expenditures in the new budget, because as we talked about in the financial report, we have not expended all of those monies, but we plan to expend a significant amount in the upcoming budget year. So one point five million dollars for road construction and maintenance, three hundred thousand dollars towards mini roundabout at Main Street and State Route two oh-six, hundred thousand dollars for Pioneer Park at the stormwater retention basin for the discharge pipelining, forty thousand dollars towards resurfacing the Nancy Lane playground surface, two hundred thousand dollars to pave the gravel lots at Walker Park, a hundred thousand dollars for soccer field lighting, sixty thousand dollars for ball field fencing, and fifty-five thousand dollars towards the purchase of a new fire truck, brush truck.
Could you explain in a little detail about the ARPA funding? I'm sure, expand on that just a little bit. That is not, it's in our budget, but could you tell where that money came from?
Yes, that money has come from the American Rescue Plan Act. It's this federal funds that were allocated to municipalities and towns across the country. The federal government did put timelines on those for spending and allocating those funds, committing and, and getting all of those funds paid. Those funds have to be allocated and committed by the end of twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, and all of the bills have to be paid and settled by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So we had to show those revenues so that you could show those expenditures on the other side of the equation.
Thank you.
Does that, was that perfect?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. So now we get into the fun stuff. So real estate reappraisals and values, so who, who does it, how's it work? So we sourced this right from the Comptroller's website. Property taxes in Tennessee are calculated utilizing the following four components. So you have an appraised value, you've got an assessment ratio, you have an assist value, and then you have your actual tax rate. So those of you who are in residential homes and farms, you're going to pay twenty-five percent of your appraised market value. Industrial and commercial is forty cent of the appraised value. We're going to break that down for folks here. But it is determined by the county property assessor. So that's an important thing to note. As far as assessments of properties and values, the town of Atoka has zero input on that and zero control over that process. Some of you may have checked your tax records, so this came right from the Tipton County website. Anybody, this is open public information, all are available to check their own reassessments, which I'm sure they've gotten in the mail as well. So we wanted to try to communicate exactly what we're talking about, when we're talking about what you're, what you would be taxed on when it comes to an assessment versus a total market value. Based on some of the comments earlier, I think there might be some misunderstanding on what you're actually being taxed on, so we did our best to try to break this down for folks. Took a random property on Jonesboro Drive, so the land market value, as you can see, was sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. The improvements to that property, the four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, which brings your total market appraisal to four hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars. And like I mentioned earlier, because it's a residential property, you're taxed at one twenty-five percent of the total market appraisal. So those of you that might have your calculators out to double-check the numbers, that's a hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars. So what's this break it down to? So to calculate your tax on your property, you'd multiply the assessed value by the tax rate. So in our scenario that we just showed you on the previous slide, if you've got a house with an appraised value of four hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred dollars, the assessed value is one hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars, which is twenty-five percent of four hundred ninety-six thousand. The tax rate that is anticipated to be set by the town at point eight-two-two-six per hundred dollars of assessed value. So to figure the tax, simply multiply the assessed value by the tax rate. So we've broken it down a couple ways there, so you can see eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty cents at the estimated certified rate, and the proposed rate would be a total of one thousand twenty dollars. So your difference per month is fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents per month. Those of you that have other assessed values, you can see we, we included our one hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollar option under the assessment value column. We also are including our ninety thousand dollar example that we put out in some additional information on Friday. So you can see if you have a hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollar assessment, the difference between the estimated certified rate of point six-eight-three-eight and the proposed rate of point eight-two-two-six is fourteen dollars thirty-five cents per month. We have some properties that their new assessment values are only forty-five thousand, so it was only relevant to include it here in this chart. That's a difference of five dollars and twenty-one cents per month. So the state provided estimated certified tax rate. So number one, Atoka is the largest municipality in Tipton County and provides high-quality citizen service. citizen services. And number two, even with a proposal of 8226, Atoka would retain one of the lowest tax rates in Tipton County. And the chart that you have on your screens are the municipal estimated state certified tax rates for the municipalities in the county. So Atoka, you can see, for full transparency, we're expecting our certified tax rate to be somewhere around 6838. The town of Brighton is expected to be .7347. You've heard this number from us this evening. Atoka's estimated general fund needs at .8226. The city of Monford is projected to be at .8516. Covington's at 1.0143. Mason's at 1.2345. And Tipton County is projected to be at $1.53.
So this is a very important slide. Just, I want to make it crystal clear. The first yellow that you're looking, the far left, that would be the current estimated rate for Atoka. We are the lowest with this budget tonight. If it were to be proposed, if it were to be approved, the only people, the only community that would be lower than Atoka is Brighton. Nothing against Brighton, but that's not apples and oranges, people. And you can see, you're getting a very good bang for your tax dollar. Everybody else around us is, it costs more to live in those communities. Go ahead.
Mayor, really just had one more, one more slide, and that was to wrap up the presentation. So the defined budgetary goals are achieved in the fiscal year 24 budget. Based on direction from the Board of Mayor and Alderman, the proposed 24 budget is prepared for final consideration. I'm just going to back up one slide and if folks want to review that a little bit more. But that's, as far as the presentation on the budget, Mayor, that's all that I have.
So hopefully that was helpful. I don't know if you had already calculated what your tax increase would be if the proposed budget is approved. Atoka average is about $12.50 a month. It goes down, any, some people are going to see about a $5 and some change increase. Some people could see $16 a month increase. And the administrator did a good job of laying out, this budget is about personnel, personnel, personnel. Our department heads from the very first meeting said, we've got to have more people. We're, we've got a Band-Aid on it. We're not addressing the actual problem. We're just putting a Band-Aid. You want to think of it another way, we're treading water, sometimes we go under. But we keep Public Works, Parks and Rec, the departmental heads, these are the ones that are day-to-day doing the job for you. That's what they're telling us they need. That's the majority of this budget. All right. So we've reached that point in our agenda. It's Exhibit E in your package. This is the final consideration of adopting fiscal year 2024 town budget. Is there any objection to reading by title only? Hearing none. Ms. Town Administrator.
Well, recorder.
Thank you, Ms. Town Recorder.
An ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and other related provisions to the Atoka Municipal Code ordinances.
Thank you, ma'am. I would entertain a motion about this ordinance.
I make a motion to accept the ordinance for the fiscal year 2024 budget.
To approve that?
To approve it, yes, sir.
We have a motion from Alderman Renfro to approve the Exhibit E in your packet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Alderman Schaefer. This is an ordinance, we'll go by roll call vote. Alderman Pace.
We're not going to have any discussion, Mayor?
Any discussion? Thank you, sir.
So I want to point where my, where my head's at right now. I understand this is a really hard year, one way or the other, and it's never going to get easier to do this, and we've forwarded tons of hours on this. It is a personnel thing, and I get that there could be a lot of different areas that we can look at harder. But I want to point out too, with personnel, we've seen increased call loads year after year after year. Police Department, you're up, your Part One crimes are going up. You need more officers on the street, Fire Department, you're seeing an increase in call load. I don't know if anybody has realized that just this past four months, Public Works has 1,200 calls for service for a shop of eight people. It's a lot of calls for service. And I completely agree that personnel is needed. I just, I wonder if there was some, if there's still some fat there that we could possibly bring out.
Any other discussion?
I can't say it any better than most of you have. I've been against this from the beginning. I'm thinking now's the time. Further down this agenda, we're fixing to raise your, we'll probably raise your water and sewer rates. Your insurance is going up. I'm against it. I hope you all will vote against it, and let's go work on something else and make it a little more equitable for the rest of us.
Mike? Think there's any, any more discussion?
I'm going to kind of go off what you said, Mayor, and some of you've said tonight too. This, we spent a lot of time with this budget. This isn't a decision any of us have taken lightly. You know, we're residents of this town, we pay taxes just like everybody. The way we came up with, with all of this is talking to our department heads, our chiefs, our directors, and, you know, before we even started this process, discussion was people, people, people. And also, in this budget, we are investing in our future. Waiting on, waiting to do these things, you know, invest in bridge repair and IDB and things like that, you know, fire trucks and, you know, everything expenses. The longer we wait to invest, the more expensive that's going to be. So I feel very strongly that, you know, but let's do it now and fix it now versus down the road. I think this budget also will sustain us, you know. Just going off department heads, that's, that's who we pay, that's who we trust. I feel that this is absolutely necessary budget.
If I can make a quick note, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else? The department heads, bless them, they work hard, they all do, but every year they come and ask for the most of what they want, not necessarily what they need. It's always been that way. That's budgeting. And it's our job, they come and ask for the most, and it's our job to cut it down to see what we can need or afford. I would like to be interested to know what they originally came with. And I bet it was three each, and bless Chief McMillian, he gave up one for Public Works, and I appreciate that, sir. But normally, they come and ask for three personnel every year. Police, Fire, Public Works will come ask for one or two. And that's just the way budgeting works. And we're up here to be able to spend what we can afford, not necessarily what we want. Thank you, Mayor.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll do a roll call. Alderman Pace?
No.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
No.
Alderman Giannini?
No.
Alderman Feldmayer?
No.
Okay, we have a ordinance. Two yes, four no. The ordinance does not carry. Mr. Town Administrator, we'll go to our next exhibit on the agenda, Exhibit F.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so this is an ordinance, I believe it's under final consideration to amend previous ordinances and to allow certain fees and structures to be set by resolution. So seeks to revise language for certain, certain town fees. We have resolution, the town recognizes that certain fees and fines are and will remain adopted by ordinance, which will be referenced in the proposed fee schedule. So we've done that. Setting the fees by resolution, where allowed by law, will provide the ability to adapt to changing costs without the need to do so by ordinance. Does pass on first reading.
All right. Do I have any objection to reading the ordinance by title only? Hearing none, Ms. Town Recorder.
An ordinance to amend the Atoka Municipal Code related to various fees, rates, and other revenue structures.
Make a motion to approve Exhibit F on final reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer. I have a second by Alderman Harper. This is an ordinance, recall, be a roll call vote. This just did pass first reading on the ninth day of May. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Pace?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer?
Yes.
Alderman Giannini?
Yes.
Exhibit F passes. New business tonight. We have ordinances and resolutions, this is the first consideration for the fiscal year 2023, amending the 2023 water sewer budgets, Exhibit G in your packet. Mr. Town Administrator.
Similar to what we've done for the fiscal year 23 budget, this amends the water and sewer budgets for fiscal year 23. The adopted budget for sewer was 1.36 million, and the amended budget will be a reflection of 1.6 million. Water fund would be the adopted expenditures of 1.29 million, and the amended budget would be 1.31 million.
Are there any objection to reading the ordinance by title only? Hearing none, Ms. Town Recorder.
An ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 22-06-02 related to approved expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 22, and ending June 30, 23.
Make a motion, Exhibit G on first reading be approved.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Be a second by Alderman Giannini. This is an ordinance, we'll give a roll call vote. Alderman Giannini?
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Pace?
Yes.
And carries. Exhibit G. Next up in your packet is Exhibit H. You can look on your monitors, and this is the adopting, first consideration of water sewer rates. Mr. Town Administrator.
To be clear, Mayor, it's not sewer rates, it's the water and sewer budgets.
Thank you.
For fiscal 24 years. So I've had all the information, and we've worked through our operating revenues and expenditures. It's in ordinance form. Be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have.
Is there any objection to reading this ordinance by title only? Hearing none, Ms. Town Administrator for Town Recorder.
An ordinance of the town of Atoka, Tennessee, adopting the annual water and sewer fund budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and other related provisions to the Atoka Municipal Code ordinances.
Chair would accept the motion on this ordinance?
Make a motion be approved on first reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer, I have a second by Alderman Pace to approve this. Any discussion? Hearing none. Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Renfro?
Yes.
Alderman Giannini?
Yes.
Alderman Pace?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer?
Yes.
Exhibit H is approved. Exhibit I, we have our first consideration for amending the water and sewer fees. Mr. Town Administrator.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so this is the first consideration of an ordinance to adopt the water and sewer fees, and during the June 6, 2023 work session, water and sewer fees and rates were discussed at great length. Based on the board's direction, that that work session, water and sewer rates and fees are proposed to be adjusted as contained in the ordinance. So you have, previous rates and fees are there in black, changes, recommendations are in red.
Is there any objection to reading this ordinance by title only? Hearing none, Ms. Town Recorder.
An ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 4, Section 403 and 404 of the Atoka Municipal Code related to water and sewer service rates.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for Exhibit I?
I'll make a motion, Exhibit I be approved on first reading.
We have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer. Do we have a second? No, ma'am. Citizens' concerns at the end of the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
It was just a question of this one.
Well, we're going to talk about discussion. This is a first reading. This is, there will be a second reading in a public news. Is there any discussion about this?
Mayor, did you hear your second?
Who was it? Alderman Schaefer.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, could you educate our citizens as to the current state of Atoka and the state of Tennessee with our water sewer?
You said earlier, it's a, it might be longer than a four-hour conference.
It might be. I'm just, I'm talking about specifically about the fact of, are we profitable or not?
Yes, sir. As we talked about, and we reviewed our financials earlier in this meeting, saw that the water and sewer rates were vastly different. So water rates were in the slight positive, as it equates to the amount of revenues and relative to budget. Sewer rates are, we were still, when we adjusted rates last year, surely you all remember that we had still anticipated a negative revenue stream, even when we adjusted those rates, and we continued to monitor them throughout the year. So these rates and fees that are in front of you for your consideration this evening are a reflection of the needs of each of those funds to be able to set, not only meet the expenditures, but also to be able to set aside some funds for capital planning, et cetera.
Now, the rates we did last year, the rates the state said we had to do.
We had to communicate, yes, so we're under a water, wastewater financing board order. And I did send this draft ordinance to Tennessee Association of Utility Districts, just so this is what is being considered by the board. And so I just got to thank you back, but we will be getting our legal order back at some point in the near future. So what we did last year was communicated to them, and what we, what you're considering tonight, based on input from the work session and other financial needs, as we've demonstrated, are a reflection of that as well.
We have a motion and a second, I believe.
I have a question, two questions.
So discussion?
Discussion, yes. The, as a citizen, you might ask, you saw that our water rates, you know, that they were, they were within budget this year, and so they might ask, you know, why, why should the board consider a small increase? And would I be correct to say that we purchased our water from two different municipalities, Poplar Grove and Monford? That's correct. And we've been put on notice that those rates are going to increase next year. In other words, we're going to see an increase in our cost of goods sold, therefore, if we don't have a small increase, we're going to be back in the, in the red next year. Is that correct?
Next four years.
Yeah, that's generally correct.
The Public Works Session that we had, we had Representative from Poplar Grove coming. They're also trying to meet their customers' demands with underground water storage, et cetera. They're going to apply for a grant, so if they get the grant, our water acquisition costs will probably only go up two and a half percent, but if they don't get the grant, they're going to go up 3%, which means those are our acquisition costs.
Right.
The city of Monford wanted to already increase their rates above what we were paying from Poplar Grove, but their contract says they can't go above what Poplar Grove is charging us, so they, they wanted to go another 10 or 15 cents above. I forget the exact number, but based on the contract and the agreement that we've got, they couldn't go above Poplar Grove, so they, they want more out of us as well. Grove, so they, they want more out of us as well.
Can y'all hear the administrator in the back, okay? I get no and yeah. You might want to put the mic closer, Mr. Martin.
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Harper.
Second question, I had a builder call me yesterday that's heard about the proposed increase in sewer connections, and said, hey, I've got three or four lots left, I'm going to come up there, I want to pay for them now, so I don't incur that increase. But I got called back and said they weren't going to allow him to do that. Can we elaborate on that?
I don't know about that.
Okay, so.
I haven't spoken to him.
So just for the record, anybody that currently has a lot in Etoka, prior to the passing of the second ordinance, if they want to come in and pay those sewer tap fees at the current rate, will be able to do so?
Well, the rates are the rates until they're changed.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm saying. They wanted to pay for them, actually brought a check for several thousand dollars and said we wouldn't take it.
I believe it was 11,000.
Yes.
I heard the same.
I heard, yeah.
Do you know anything about that, Stevie?
Well, it sounds like you should convey that they can do that.
They can do, that's what I should let you, for the record, anybody that has lots now can come pay now. It's two separate checks, one to the utility and one for the recovery portion. It's not the same check. We take two different checks.
Do the board want to allow it?
No, I wouldn't allow it. Right. It's the fee.
It's the fee, no, it's the fee.
I just want to make sure we're not turning down 11,000 about a check.
Right.
This is news to me.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Mr. Deb, give me who made the motion, Alderman Feldmayer?
Feldmayer and Schaefer, second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion we've had. So roll call. Trying to change it up here. Alderman Harper.
Yes.
Alderman Renfro.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Pace.
Yes.
Alderman Feldmayer.
Yes.
Alderman Giannini.
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Exhibit I. Next in your packet is Exhibit J. This is a resolution for fee scheduling. Mr. Town Administrator. Do you like that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Pull that microphone closer to you, sir.
We've got the final passage of the ordinance, which allows us to make these changes. So the resolution before you is adopting certain rates and fees and fines where required by law. We're allowed to do so now, since on final passage, we can do so by adopting some of these fees by resolution. So we've tried to incorporate all of the town's fees in one location, and those where they are set by ordinance, we've noted those in the column. Those that are allowed to be set by resolution, also noted by resolution. So things like the cost for parks and rec, and, you know, other permitting fees for other structures and such, and we talked to splash pads and some police department fees, you know, so you've had those lists, drafted, I think this is probably the third time y'all are seeing it. Saw it in draft format when we had some budget discussions, I believe it was the last budget work session. Passed on first reading, so this is the resolution to adopt these fees.
Do we have a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a statement?
No, sir. You can during citizens' concerns. We have a second by Alderman Schaefer. Any discussion?
The only pushback that I've gotten on this is, under the construction plan, the current review included, proposed fee is 800, $800 plus $40 a lot. I think that's the current fee, is that the current fee? Is that the proposed is engineered review fees paid by the applicant for review. Essentially, what we're asking the developers to do is to essentially recoup any cost that the town is charged by our current engineer. But the feedback that I got was essentially, that's essentially asking the developer for a blank check, you know, that we've had a few developments that they submitted supposedly per our regs, and then they came back and asked for some different things. One in particular, I think Shepherd's Ridge, went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And if, if the pushback was, if, if there are, I guess, changes in the wind on behalf of any engineering firm that we hire, ultimately, that developer incurs that whole cost, right? And so I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure, is there a, is there a better way than just saying, you know, you guys pay, you know, whatever? And because I'm afraid that is going to hurt our future developments.
Mayor, could I might add something?
Please.
So this, for having the developers pay the freight for the use of their plans is absolutely what this is about, 100%. For many years, we've had development fees capped at $5,000, and taxpayers have been paying the difference when we've got 15,000 or $20,000 in review fees. So that's really what this is about, just to require developers to pay the review fees in total.
Correct.
Not anymore. Not any less. Similar to what Monford does. So Monford passes on all those review fees to the developer, which helps to make sure that we're getting a good product submitted, a quick turnaround, so that things aren't getting batted back and forth over months in different lengths of time.
I know, but, and I'm not saying that $800 doesn't need to be $1,200, or the $40 a lot doesn't need to be $60 a lot. I just, I just can't sign on just giving a blank check. Because I don't believe Cogerville, Lakeland, Millington, anybody else does that.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to add, under fence permit, put new permit there. It's the top of it.
You have two percent.
Green.
Shouldn't we have changed the resolution?
Wouldn't we have to change the resolution?
Yeah, we can just get it started here. We won't have to go back and change that.
Well, this will follow, this needs to follow the resolution, not the resolution follow this.
I don't know.
That's what this is. This is just such a fee.
This is just such a price.
What was that?
I want to make sure that's, it's for a new permit only, and you got down here by the, I say you, but driveway and sidewalk, $50 for a new permit. I want to add new permit, by fence permit as well.
Correct. If somebody adds a gate or does a repair to storm damage, we don't want to penalize, you know, homeowner for fixing some storm damage. There's always that fine line between repair, you know, but if somebody's, I don't want to penalize somebody who wants to fix, you know, something up. But the purpose of the fence permit originally, because I was on the board when it passed, and maybe we lowered it from 100 to 50, is, number one, so people understand setbacks. They understand that you shouldn't put a fence in your front yard, that people understand that you can't put a fence to cover a gas meter or electric meter. Make sure that people understand that you need to call 811 before you dig. Make sure people understand your setbacks and your, you know, those kind of things. So it's really not, I mean, we're not making any money sending Mark out with $50, guys. There's a whole lot of public about fees. We're not making any money. We're really just making sure that the public is educated that a new fence is, sometimes, you know, there are just a few things you need to know. But I don't want to penalize somebody, as Alderman Giannini mentioned, you know, for adding a gate or making a storm damage repair.
Well, maybe, I would just offer this as an idea. I believe that our building code official has a pretty in-depth presentation to give to the board and citizens. One of the components is about fences and permits.
Okay.
So maybe you want to hear that now, or discuss that now, if it's a topic for discussion, or can proceed as y'all wish.
I mean, Alderman Giannini, if I correct me, he just wants us to put, he wants to modify this current thing we're voting on, to say new permit.
New permit.
And then we can tackle a more in-depth fence thing at another meeting. I'm looking for the board's guidance, is that correct?
That's, that's the way I feel.
And I think if somebody moved their fence, that would be a new fence.
New fence.
Time to get up.
So. One more thing, underneath the fence permit, I just noticed the reinspection fee of $25. I also want to make sure that we're aware that we're not charging the $25 on the first reinspection. If a builder, Inspector Daughtry comes out and fails a builder for a defect, and he has to call for a reinspection, most municipalities don't charge for that first reinspection. However, if Inspector Daughtry says, you need to fix this, and then they call for a reinspection, and they don't fix it, by all means, there needs to be a reinspection fee, and maybe even a higher fee for a second or third reinspection, you know, if that makes sense.
Mayor, if I may interject here, it may be that, if I can suggest to the board, because of the changes that you're proposing, this resolution is to pass this attachment, not as amended or with additions, and so you may want to table it.
Yeah, thank you.
Have your suggestion, have an updated fee spreadsheet with all the current modifications and pass it at the next meeting. One additional thing that I will point out, there are some TCA codes, they call them the rules of the road, that are, that deal with the funds for different things. Those are changed pretty often, and so one thing that the board and the administration will want to make sure of is that someone's checking the spreadsheet against the current ordinance's resolutions and laws on an annual basis.
Yes.
To make sure that everything matches.
That's my concern.
I would expect that you will be seeing amendments to this as things are updated and changed.
Ms. Amber, very rare. So the ordinance previous in the meeting was on final consideration, which amended the ordinance or some of those fees that were, prior to, a few moments ago, assessed. May the board consider adopting this fee schedule so that we have something? Because in some cases, we haven't, we're right now, if this isn't adopted, we wouldn't have anything.
You can adopt it.
And then you can come right back and amend it by resolution, which was really the intent of being able to change it by resolution, rather than going through two readings of an ordinance. Does that make sense?
It does, and absolutely, that would be the second option, you could adopt it as is tonight, with none of the suggestions, come back and amend it at the next meeting with all of your suggestions. And it may be that this is more of a comprehensive document that you revisit every so often as things are changed.
So whoever wants to make a motion, be sure you state your, all the changes we've talked about.
No changes.
No changes. Do I have a resolution, then, to accept, a motion to accept the resolution?
First, a second.
Could you remind me who that was, Mr. reporter?
First is Feldmayer and second is Schaefer.
All right, so we have a motion to accept by Alderman Feldmayer, a second by Alderman Schaefer. We've had discussion. We do not need a roll call for resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Exhibit J carries.
If there's some changes that the board would like that we can get submitted to y'all, feel free to send them, and we can revise and discuss as needed.
Exhibit K in your packet is a resolution for amending our asset capitalization policy. Can you elaborate on this, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir. During our work session on June 6, we had a discussion, the board with the CPA, and there was a discussion about adjusting the asset capitalization policy. Years and years ago, it was $4,500. Around 20,000, around 2018, it was adjusted down to $2,500. Based on, you know, current market conditions, et cetera, it was the feeling that the $7,500 per single item limit would be more appropriate, and the board wished to consider a resolution doing just that at the meeting, so this resolution would be setting the asset capitalization policy for a single item at $7,500, which means anything under that, we would not put on the depreciation schedule.
Make a motion Exhibit K be approved.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer to accept the resolution and list it as Exhibit K. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, Exhibit K passes. Exhibit L in your packet. It's a resolution approving an annual municipal software agreements. Mr. Administrator.
So this really is just an annual thing. Local government is what we utilize for all of our financial needs, and it's an annual, just approving an annual agreement for hardware maintenance between local government, corporation, and the town. Agreement's continuation of our existing fee schedule with local government. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
We're on L, Mr. Curtis.
There is no L on the presentation.
Make a motion Exhibit L be approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer to approve Exhibit L resolution, a second by Alderman Giannini. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, Exhibit L approved. Exhibit M in your packet. We have a bid award for the Edith Lane culvert replacement. Mr. Administrator.
Yes, sir. The town released a call for bids to replace the Edith Lane culvert. I'm sure most folks are aware that the road is close to the deteriorating nature of the culverts, so it is detrimental, and it is very important we get it done as soon as we can. Town opened bids Friday, March 7 through May 17. Bid tabulation is provided in your packet. Lowest bidder appears to be N-Score LLC at a total bid price of $157,000, $155.
And staff would recommend that?
Staff has reviewed the submission, it meets the specifications, and they're the lowest responsible there.
All right.
Have we ever worked with either, either one?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know if our public works director may have some additional input on that or not. I don't know where, thought I saw him somewhere.
No, sir, we have not. Los Angeles didn't win the other culvert awards. They had not saw it yet. We'll wait on the contract for that, for him to bring that to us, but the others, we have not. I'll reach out to Lane with our SSR engineer, ask for input, why it's such a dramatic difference, but he can say that it's just surprise differences, but I guess maybe they get a better response tomorrow.
Make a motion to approve N-Score LLC.
I have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer to award the bid to N-Score LLC. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Pace. Any further discussion?
The last bid was what, 340,000?
It was. Was that Grace?
That's Edith.
Edith, yeah. Oh, yeah, we said it. All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of awarding the bid to N-Score LLC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bid is awarded. Miss Laney has items. I think we have anything in our packet about that. Go ahead, Mr. Town Administrator.
No, you do not, nothing too extravagant. We need to be able to issue the public works director a credit card, and also we need to adjust the limit for the building code official. So staff would recommend approving a credit card for Public Works Director Wesley Arborough with a limit of $2,500, and a credit limit increase from $500 to $1,000 for the building code official. And that needs to just be in the minutes, the bank wants to see it approved in minutes, and then we can submit that to them, and they can make the adjustment, if the board approves.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Feldmayer, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Renfro. Any further discussion, or the Town Administrator? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right, we come to departmental reports. Ladies and gentlemen, first up is our code enforcement, Mr. Mark Dorton.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, citizens and staff in attendance and online. Before you'll see my monthly report. Before you'll see my monthly report, um, if you have any questions, I can answer anything regarding that. Uh, as you can see, we had five new construction permits this, or last month. Sixteen total inspections, one hundred thirty-two code enforcement actions, six of those being citations for non-compliance and the permit fees collected.
Any questions for Inspector Dorton?
I do have a, a brief presentation, I'll keep it brief.
Okay.
Couple of hot, hot button items that have come forth here lately. There you go. All right, so the question has been, been brought up about how I enforce code enforcement. It's all based on the two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. It was adopted by ordinance by you, the board, November of two thousand twenty. That ordinance number is two zero dash one one dash zero two, which is on our website. It replaced the previous chapter thirteen of the municipal ordinance in its entirety. That is the ordinance. I know it may be hard to read, but that is the in ordinance in its entirety. Couple of definitions may clear up some questions that, that have been brought up. Uh, the general, I am hereby authorized by you appointing me as a building code official to conduct these activities. Uh, I have the authority to render interpretations of the code and adopt policies and procedures in order to clarify the application of the provisions. All of this is online, available online if you Google two thousand eighteen International Property Maintenance Code. This is a big one. A lot of people have said I'm trespassing, I have to have a warrant enter their property. Section one oh four point three grants me right to entry where it is necessary to make an inspection to enforce a provision of the code or whenever the code official has reasonable cause to believe that there exists a structure or upon a premises a condition in violation of the code, I am authorized to enter the structure or premises at reasonable times inspect. Piggyback on that, I've been asked why I don't knock on doors. Out of respect for our citizens, I don't know what their work sleep schedule is. I have worked midnights, I've been woken up in the middle of my sleep. I don't knock on doors unless I see signs of physical activity, then I'll knock on the door. That's why I don't knock on doors. Identification, this has been brought up. Hopefully whoever made the comment they worried about me confused me with a criminal. That is my town issued identification card. Everybody can see what I look like. I shall carry that at proper identification when I inspect. I also always have it on my person. So any, at any time anybody questions my, the validity of my identity, I will present you my ID card. Notice of violation, this comes into concern with how I notify people of the violations they receive in accordance with one oh six point two. I shall serve a notice of violation or order in accordance with section one oh seven, which I'll get to just here shortly. One oh six point three covers the prosecution of the violation. It spells out exactly, any person failing to comply with a notice of violation or order served in accordance with section one oh seven shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor or civil infraction. It's a lot of other verbiage that you can read. Notice to reasonable person, per, excuse me, notice to person responsible. Whenever the code official determines that there's been a violation of the code or has grounds to believe that a violation occurred, notice shall be given in a manner prescribed in section one oh seven two, one oh seven three to the proper, or excuse me, to the person responsible for the violation specified with the code. Those two sections are here. One oh seven point two is the form. Says the notice has to be in writing, include a description of the real estate sufficient for identification, a statement of violation, and why the notice being issued, a corrective action allowing reasonable time to make the repairs, inform the property owner or their authorized agent the right of appeal, and included a statement of the right to appeal, excuse me, included a statement of the right to file a lien in accordance with section one oh six point three. This is another hot item. Method of service, I am bound by code, such notice shall be deemed to be properly served if a copy thereof is delivered personally or sent by certified or first-class mail, addressed to the last known address. If the notice is returned showing that the letter was not delivered, a copy thereof shall be posted in a conspicuous place. That's the reason for the eight dollar and thirteen cent letter. I don't set those rates, that's the postal service. They set those rates. And they've gone from seven dollars and thirty-five cents this time last year to eight dollars and thirteen cents currently, with expectation to go up again. This is the infamous orange letter. All right, I instituted this last year when I came on board because the only recourse I had was to send that eight dollar and thirteen cent letter immediately, wait for a response or compliance, then issue a citation and then deal with the court proceedings. So in an effort to save tax dollars money, I came up with this form for those citizens that don't know what our codes may be or may have forgotten. It's simple, it's got a, a verbiage which references the ordinance and the International Property Maintenance Code with a varying list of, of violations, which I see most common. A date, uh, the number of days to correct it. If you notice at the top, it has the address, so that means the requirements for the notice, then the date and my signature. This is the letter that I'm required by code to send by certified mail or personal service, which personal service is time consuming and it wastes taxpayers' dollars by my salary due to trying to find people who may or may not be at home. I redacted the information for, for this, this is an actual one I sent out. If you look, it breaks down what the violation is, what they need to do to comply, and the, uh, recourse if they, they fail to. It also allows them the opportunity to file an appeal, all spelled out in this letter, with my contact information at the bottom in case they need some clarification. All right, uh, some definitions, because this has come into play. Uh, the code official, that's me, charged with the administration enforcing the code. Exterior properties, any open space on the premises on, or adjoining property under the control of the owner or operators of such premises. Big ticket here. Inoperable vehicle. A vehicle that cannot be driven upon the public streets for reasons including but not limited to being unlicensed, wrecked, abandoned, in a state of disrepair, or incapable of being moved under its own power. Premises is a lot, plot or parcel land easement or public way, including any structure of their own. And this is the other one. Yard. Any open space on the same lot with a structure. I had a discussion with one of our citizens that his driveway was not in his yard. Yard is an open space on the same lot with a structure. Accessory structures. They're including detached garages, fences and walls, shall be maintained, structured, sound and good repair. I'll get back to this one, I'm gonna cover it in the building part in more detail, but it is covered under the International Property Maintenance Code. Motor vehicles, like I said, this is a hot topic item, except as provided for any other regulations, inoperable, unlicensed or vehicles shall not be parked, kept or stored on any premises, and vehicles should not at any time be in a state of major disassembly, disrepair, or in the process of being stripped or dismantled. Painting of the vehicles is prohibited unless conducted inside an approved spray booth. There is an exception, you see the exception for any, uh, type of work undergoing as long as it's in an approved structure for those purposes. Here are examples of what I have encountered, these are all actually here in the town of Otoka. And there are some worse and there, some are about the same, but here's four good examples of the things I encountered that fall under the motor vehicle statute. You have one, the top left is the old expire tag. Top right is no tag. Bottom left is flat tires, and it actually has an expire tag on it, I just didn't show that picture. And obviously you can see the other one is self-explanatory. All right, the question is, how can he see that little sticker from the street? He's trespassing on my property. As you can see, the top left is the old style tag that was obsolete January first of this year. The bottom right is the new style tag. Coin of phrase from my coach, it's a softball. I can see that thing from my way, even though my wife says I can't see. I can see the difference between those two from the street. All right, going into the International Residential Code. It was adopted by ordinance on August the tenth of twenty-one. That ordinance number is two one dash zero eight dash zero three, and it replaced the previous version, which was a two thousand twelve. Were required by statute to change, will be within seven years of the current code. That is the ordinance. Ordinance nineteen dash zero five dash zero three is in, is relevant here because it's hard to see at the bottom, but that's where the ordinance passed that all offenses are required to have a permit. The International Residential Code, the scope. The provisions of this code shall apply to the construction, alteration, movement, enlargement, replacement, repair, equipment, use and occupancy, location, removal and demolition of detached one and two family dwellings and townhouses not more than three stories above grade plan and height with a separate means of egress and their accessory structures, which that offense is considered an accessory structure, not more than three stories above grade plan and height. Conflicts, where conflicts occur between the provisions of the code and the reference codes and standards, the provisions always apply. And this one oh two point seven is existing structures. If you look in that, what's important in that section is the International Property Maintenance Code is referenced. General, again, this gives me my authority based on your appointment as the board. This is, this is a section here about building permits. They are required under section one oh five, one oh five point one. Any owner or, or owner's authorized agent who intends to construct, enlarge, alter, repair, move, demolish or change the occupancy of a building or structure, or erect, install, enlarge, alter, repair, remove, convert or replace any electrical, gas, mechanical plumbing system, which is regulated by this code, or to cause such, such work to be performed, shall first make an application to the building official and obtain a permit. So that's the basis for requiring the fence permit based off the fact that we adopted this code. The board adopted the International Property Maintenance Code and the fee schedule that delineated that all offenses are required. The work that's exempt from a permit, exemption from a permit. One of the things in here that I'll, I'll point out, uh, one story detached accessory structure provided to the floorhead does not exceed two hundred square feet, which by ordinance, all accessory structures are required to have a permit. Fences not over seven feet high, again, the ordinance that you passed is all fences are required to have a permit. And it goes into retaining walls, sidewalks, driveways, painting and prefabricated swimming pools that are less than twenty-four inches deep, playground equipment, awnings and decks. And again, the decks that don't exceed two hundred square feet under the building code don't require permit, but your ordinance does. General definitions, if you see here, accessory structure lays out what accessory structure is, what my definition of my title and a lot. All right, I know this topic was up earlier and, uh, the town administrator alluded to this. The building code is strict, it is specifically states repair of any accessory structure. But I'm a common sense guy, believer or not, contrary to proper belief, I'm a common sense guy. Those top pictures, if you see, there's a couple of fence pickets, there's a gate, the remainder of the fences is in repair, but the gate had to be replaced. And that section of fence, which I didn't get out and measure it, but it's about sixteen, twenty feet long. Though, I'm not gonna require those to have a permit based on like the, the question about the storm damage. Though, that's maintenance. Again, the pickets you see on the bottom pictures. That will require permit because they're gonna replace two entire sides of a fence. Because it's on a major thoroughfare, a lot of the older fences, the reason for the fence permit application to begin with is because a lot of fences were just haphazardly being put in. Zoning violations, they're covering up utility meters, all of that, the gamut of those things. A lot of those are at their lifespan, they're about to fall down. That's why you get a wind that'll blow a fence down that you thought was structurally sound, but it's not. So my job is to make sure that that fence, and we're gonna use this one as a reference, is set back properly from that road, doesn't violate any utility easement, uh, make sure that it's in, within the confines of that plot, it doesn't cover up any of the utilities, so in, God forbid, in the event of a natural disaster, our public works guys aren't trying to scale the fence to turn the gas off, get bit by someone's dog, or God forbid, be, uh, confused with a, a criminal. These, on the other hand, the top left picture is, they're replacing two sides of the fence, gotta have a permit. The top right one, completely new fence. And these others too, these are just different, different versions of fences that I've seen. One thing I would like to point out to the board, I'm not sure if you're aware of this or not, but in the last four months alone, I've been threatened with physical assault four times. I've been threatened to be shot. Uh, luckily, the chief and I have worked on, that person's got a warrant for their arrest. Uh, the last two days, I had a person say, they hope they don't confuse me with a criminal. You take that for what you will. I'm a retired law enforcement officer, twenty-five years, I know what that means. Also had a fellow say that I had a chip on my shoulder and that somebody should knock it off. Take that for what you may. Just to show you that I know it's a lot of controversy, but I've shown you tonight in black and white that justifies the banners of what I'm doing and the reason for what I'm doing. And I hope that whoever posted the post asking for clarification is here or watching so they can see this. Maybe I'll answer their questions.
I don't disagree, you're doing what you're supposed to. I think it's up to us to change it.
Yes, sir, I'm just going based off the code and ordinance.
I agree with you.
Yes, sir. And that's what, and that's what I tell people. I'm charged with enforcing it, I didn't make the rules, I'm just charged with enforcing.
How can we help you, uh, make it clear, in other words, if it was changed, uh, would it be a, a repair is a maximum length of feet of fence? Or a maximum dollar value, you know, because there's always that, that gray area between, like you said, repair and placement.
What you saw maybe is black and white, but I wanna, I wanna do whatever changes we need to do to make it. The short answer is the distance measurement wise?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, as you well know, cost of construction materials go up and down. So if we put a dollar amount, what wouldn't require permit may now require permit. But if we put in a stipulated distance, if you were gonna repair X number of feet. Now, we also need to make sure that we put in there that you can't replace X number of feet today, X number of feet tomorrow, X number of feet next week, because then you're gonna get a new fence.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So as a way to close the loophole.
Would you have a recommendation on what that maximum length of feet should be?
Would it be a percentage of the total fencing?
I think a, a percentage or, because some fences are bigger than others, you can look at the lot sizes. Some of them have huge fences, some of them have smaller fences. Uh, I know with the accessory structure, it can't be more than thirty percent of the backyard. Uh, so I think a percentage or, we're gonna have to delineate one of the two. A se, a typical fence section is eight feet. So if a tree falls through that section, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna send a letter and threaten them with any of all this crazy stuff to fix their fence. That's, that's a reasonable person standard, and that's what I try to use. Now, that one picture you saw, that whole fence gotta be replaced. So, I would say either a distance or a percentage, but then you have to get into the figure out, how do you figure the percentage? Based off different sizes of fences and whatnot. Because some people will build a wood fence and a chain link fence.
Yeah.
So would you just. Stabbing their foot, so it's entirely up to you guys how you wanna do percentage or distance.
You don't have to do that tonight.
No, no, that's, that's something you can do though to, to fix that, mitigate it. Does anybody have any questions? And that was a lot of information really quick, so.
I have a question.
Ms. Stephanie, you can, citizens' concerns, if you've signed up on the sheet.
I'm not on the sheet.
Well, you can.
Hit on the sheet.
Hit on the sheet. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Commissioner. Next up tonight is our departmental report of our fire department, the Chief McMillan.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we've got our normal, you know, monthly reports that I give y'all every month, uh, dealing with call volume and how many inspections we've got done and also how many, uh, man-hours, um, uh, we got in and training this month, um, as usual, more than PD. Um.
Is that, what was that, the?
Uh, no, there's a lot of people yelling, so I, I didn't. So, uh, if you don't have any questions about that, I'll kind of give you a rundown of, uh, some of the things we've had going on this month. Um, we know, uh, I know I've been hearing some, some chirping out there about our hydrants looking bad, so the, the, the company that is gonna clean and repaint our hydrants professionally is supposed to be here this, this week. So we're fixing to get started on that so you can, you can let all your folks know that's fixing to get underway. Um, we are, uh, currently partnering with MTAS again. This time, we're trying to develop a strategic plan for the fire department. Uh, this will be a community-driven plan, and the citizens will have the opportunity to tell us their vision and what they expect of their Otoka Fire Department. So this is kind of my official announcement to let folks know that, uh, that MTAS is gonna be reaching out to some of the citizens. They're gonna reach out to our employees first, uh, hear what they have to say, and then they'll also send out, uh, surveys to, to the citizens to figure out what exactly they want out of their fire department in the next five to ten years. And it'll help us, uh, develop a comprehensive plan so we know where we're going. Uh, I kind of know where we're going, but I'd like to know where they want us to go as well. So that's what that's all about. Um, last week, we had our incident safety officer class. Um, this was just a, 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 a very, very important training. This was just a, a, a very, very important training class that, that fire officers and personnel take that kind of cover all aspects of being safe on the fire scene. And it was a, it was really a great week because all of the, you know, the communities nearby had a lot of people in there as well. So it's always good for us to, you know, kind of get together and, and work together. So that's kind of what we had going on this month. Does anybody have any questions?
Any word on any questions?
It is still on track for July. I, I'm not making any promises, um, that sometimes we get hit with the last minute stuff, but we're still looking at July. We're still going to have a push-in ceremony that the community is going to be invited to. I'm even thinking about maybe cooking some hot dogs and stuff, so we're going to make a day out of it when we put her in service. So I'm really, really looking forward to it, and the citizen should be as well.
Chief, do y'all have any updated pictures or anything I think all of us would like to see?
Yeah, I can get that to you, but I'd just be forewarned, it doesn't look like a whole truck.
It's not like a truck, yeah, but it'd be cool to see it being built.
Yeah, it doesn't have its makeup on, it's, it's a little bit fresh out of bed, so. Yeah, I'll get that to y'all.
Chief, in our public safety meetings, you know, we've discussed, you know, how, what can we do to possibly increase your revenue, right? And a couple of things that we discussed, we're possibly looking at a, a fire fee for those not in our city limits, but those in our planning region that we are currently servicing.
That's correct.
And then, and then also looking in to see if there's any opportunity to, to bill insurance companies for some of these medical calls. I don't know if you made any, any headway on either one of those items?
Uh, the, the part about charging a fee for the folks that are in the county, our portion of the county that we officially cover is pretty small down south. We actually go out in the county fairly often in mutual aid type agreements. I wouldn't be opposed to doing that. Covington has something like that in place. It's, it's basically a voluntary system, but they, they're very adamant about getting the information out, and they have a pretty good results out of it, folks sending them money, um, every year. Uh, I did a little bit of digging into trying to backtrack on insurance companies and get reimbursed for, uh, some of the medical calls we do, and that, that gets a little bit tricky. That's, it's not an easy answer on that. If you want to, if you want to go down that road, we'll have to have some fairly, yeah, deep conversations on, on what we're going to do, moving forward.
Or we could get more money from the county.
I tried.
I tried, but also.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Thank y'all.
Next up is our park and recreation. Yes, sir.
I just forgot to add, so the past few weeks, I've been working on a, it's, it's actually a FEMA grant, but it's through the, the state, and I may have mentioned it in the last meeting, but we're starting to wrap that up, so there's a strong possibility we may be able to get our tornado sirens covered, the two new ones, so. Saving y'all money, trying.
Thank you, Chief. Etoka Parks and Recreation Director Dorothy Isipova.
Good evening. Ms. Patma, if you have any questions from my board report, just let me know. We finally got back to full staff the beginning of last week, so we've only had one maintenance man since about January. We did briefly hire somebody for about six weeks that would, did not end up being a good fit. And then after a long time, we finally got a few qualified candidates and then choose one, did choose one, and he started last week. So over the last month or so, you probably saw some times when the parks were a little too high on the grass, or needed some little extra grooming, or just anything maintenance in general, we were doing our best to keep up. So we have, over the last week and a half, have really picked up our game. You'll notice that the grass was going to stay short and pretty like we normally like to have it. We were able to tackle the disc golf course some, and can, will continue to do that also. You'll, some, there was probably some additional trash you weren't used to the last month, you'll see that being picked up a whole lot more. I kind of got hit with a double whammy because school gets out, all the parks get lots of extra people there, and then being a little shorthanded for a hot minute was a little difficult, but we all tag teamed and tried to keep it up as much as we can. So I appreciate everybody working with me on that. The splash pad, it has opened. Just to kind of give you some numbers, we have sold a total of 126, hold on, yeah, 126 of the season passes. So that comes up to 106, sorry, wrong number, 106 season passes, and that comes up to about In 14 days, we have sold 955 daily passes, so that's about $1,910. And then 126 people utilized their season pass. Splash pad parties, we have taken in, now some of these parties may be booked over the next month or so, but what has come through our system and booked is 2,720. And then so total to date, we have brought in $7,660 towards the splash pad. And in the last month, I have probably spent more than that maintaining it. So that just gives you a good idea, we used to not bring in that revenue, so at least now I have something to support the cost of the splash pad. We've had the second weekend it was open, it was on a Saturday, we walked in that morning to end the night, the small pump had cracked. It's not something you can expect to happen, it just happens. So of course it happened all weekend, nothing can ever happen Monday to Friday, but very, worked out really well. The town administrator was in Bartlett, he picked up a pool part for me, brought it back. I tried to get the part ready and off, and then we had, maintenance was there helping, and then on top of, Aloha Affordable Pools actually has spent a lot of time with me to learn about the splash pad, to be someone local I can depend on to help swap out parts. So we were only down for about three hours. So it was really nice, it was really quick, I'm super grateful to have those people in my pocket to help when I need that. Otherwise, we've had minor parts that we've had to replace here and there, but a minor part on a splash pad is upwards of $500. That seems to be the, the common ticket price for it, so it's pretty crazy how expensive it can be. Over the next few months, we're working on recaucking the flooring, and then we're going to paint it. In the off time, we may possibly do a scheduled closed day a few weeks prior, just a solid day so we can paint and let it cure. And so the, so the citizens will also start to see the money that they're paying in to come to the splash pad and do some work. Other than that, that's all I have, if y'all don't have any questions.
What do you paint?
The redoing the, the floor surfacing.
Like stained, stained?
So it's going to be a paint, so what it is, it has some granules in it that actually makes it slip resistant. So it's never been refinished or painted. We're going to seal in the cracks, because in reality, like redoing the whole thing is not ideal, but you can seal the cracks, get all, any major repairs that way, and then put that paint on it, so, because it's like a blue and a tan color, so it's pretty faded right now. And then it also has those granules in it to make it slip resistant. So we do have some areas that are not as firm as they used to be, I guess, and so if a kid is running, although they're not supposed to, it is possible they could slip and fall. So we want to avoid any accidents and things of that nature. Oh, I think there was a question about the softball fences, I can address that real quick. A lot of our fees for every season covers what happens during that season. There is on occasion, so just without going into super detail, the players playing $80 for a season. When we get all the basic fees out, uniforms, umpires, awards, and the gear and equipment, that comes up to a total of $65 and some change of the $80. So that only leaves, you know, just a little bit of money to put towards the fields. So we do, within reason, can purchase, you know, new benches, minor repairs with the activities we offer there, but large items such as a shed, or fences, or a new piece of equipment, for example.
Scoreboard.
Scoreboards. So scoreboards, we actually were able to, two of them we were able to purchase with funds, but the other two were actually purchased from the Etoka Softball Group, which the Etoka Softball Group is a little bit obsolete now, they're down to one member that runs that, so I don't see it lasting much longer. We do do sponsorships, that's in some of it, and that helps go towards the field maintenance and things of that nature. And then we're also, now that we do have those new scoreboards, we're going to get the scoreboard sponsors. So that will bring in additional money every year too, to go, because the current amount that we have budgeted is likely not going to replace all of them, but will give us a good start. And then hopefully over the, you know, my goal's always to try to bring as much as I can revenue-wise to put towards our stuff, so we don't have to ask for it.
Between your fall softball and your adult summer softball, your spring's not on your year, so it's like about $5,600 over actual expenses, just so everyone can know that wasn't that the rate.
Hold on, say that again, what were you saying?
It's about $5,600.
Over?
Yeah, over these.
Revenue over.
Yeah, revenue over expenses.
Oh, yes.
So it's not, I mean, it's like one bleacher.
Right, yes. So there's certain things that make more money than others revenue-wise, but at the end of the day, it's not going to cover the maintenance out there every day, the, you know, because maintenance alone does all of the prep of the fields. It, it's, it's a lot. So, you know, a lot of our repair budget, we have a field repair budget, we have all those in our line items that does not even cover out of the fee, but it also provides a service to the town, because when we're not using it for activities, it's available for the public to use.
Any other questions for directors?
I just got a call, I have a citizen, I just want to state, you know, for the record, that I got a call from a citizen that stated that Dorothy and her assistant, which is Maggie, had got to be two of the hardest working individuals within the town. So I just wanted to state that for the record and say thank you on behalf.
I do appreciate it, but in the new budget, I am asking for one person, because me and Maggie are about to pull our hair out. So if we can figure out how to make that still happen, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Police Chief Anthony Rudolph.
Good evening. I'll try, since it's been a long night for all of us, I'll try to be a little bit shorter than the fire chief. But one of the things that I do want to do is just kind of, since we're at the half-year point, I just kind of want to go over again the, the stats. You can see, based off of this, this first page is our Part 1 crimes. Part 1 crimes are the ones that you see listed there on the, on this first page that we have to report to the state. Currently, the ones in red, you can see like aggravated assault, domestic violence, auto theft, burglary of a business, there's, we're up eight in larcenies, so that includes your shoplifting misdemeanors, your theft from buildings, theft from motor vehicles, theft from vehicle, uh, vehicle parts, excuse me, and I think lastly was other theft nonspecifics, sometimes those become sheds or something to that effect. But that puts us roughly 10 more crimes than we had at this same time last year. Other areas you can see in the, that we are zero in, and then in the green, we're actually down in that one, and I think the only two we have is shoplifting felony, which is a dollar amount, which determines that, and our aggravated assaults are the two ones that we are actually slightly down in. The second page you'll see is more of our quality of life things. Again, we're up two in fraud. Again, I had, actually I had somebody approach me here this evening, talking about officers helping them just today for a lot, we have a lot of online scheming going on, so to speak, trying to get in people's bank accounts and the such. And we pushed out stuff on social media to kind of help with that. Again, we are up in weapons violations, our crashes, you can see, are, are, we're running around 94 there. We're actually up two this time from last year in our drug arrests, which actually is including DUIs. Our reports were up roughly 30 reports, and we're up 3,000 calls already this year, calls for service. And then at the bottom, you can see the arrests and citations. So those are, those are your totals at this point, the half point of the year, just for your, your reference. And, and here we are, you may have seen some of my emails in relation to promotions, we've, we had two sergeants positions based off of resignations and retirements that needed to be filled for quite some time. We've had some corporals who have sat in that, the position of corporal and have really proven themselves. It was those same two that entered the process, and it was those same two that were elevated, and we're very proud to have elevated Christopher Cover Rubius and Dylan Daniel to the rank of sergeant, and they had a lot of value, and we're very proud of their promotion. And, and lastly, I didn't, normally I put a training schedule on here, but there was so much to really bog you down with. I, I think even the fire department was impressed with all the training that we did, I just didn't want to bore you with it this time, so that's all we have, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Chief Rudolph?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you for directing traffic. So your chief, how is it up there directing traffic?
Uh, yes, and Chief Rudolph directed, probably most of y'all saw him directing traffic in Main Street in Etoka, Monford, and still made the meeting.
And our constable here too.
Uh, and our constable. Uh, director, the officer of our Etoka Public Works.
Good evening, good evening, mayor and aldermen, citizens. The numbers you have in front of you, I actually made a boo-boo, so I will make sure that the correct numbers get out first thing in the morning. Other than that, we've got some Grace Culverts hopefully finishing up this week. It's kind of pushed back due to some weather issues, and the rain kind of messed them up, so they had to move that around. Paving's underway, Herman Burle, Timothy, Brittany, Macklin Cove, it's all getting, all been paved. They are paving and milling some spots, trying to cover up those milling spots before they do the overlay. Then we've got Clint Brolin, Eric Power, and Braden Mullins have went to Cross Connection about two weeks ago, hopefully that they passed their test on that. Me and Wayne Solster met with SSR to discuss the Main Street lift station upgrades that we talked about a couple of weeks ago, about two weeks ago. They're coming back with some proposals and plans, we're going to go take, take a look at a couple of lift stations, get some ideas, help with Main Street lift station improvements for sure. The Walker Parkway, Betty Boyer Culverts, the contracts, the, I talked with him today, they've been kind of busy. We have sent them the contracts, but we have not received them back. He's hopefully said we will receive them by the end of this week. And starting next week, we're actually calling citizens starting tomorrow, are letting copper samples, we have to take them every three years, so we're going to contact citizens that are on our list that was brought down by the state of Tennessee. We'll be contacting them, and we'll start taking them samples next week as well.
Is it like a random thing?
Uh, they actually pick the areas, uh, pretty much on age of the house, so to speak. Yes, sir. Got anything else?
Any questions for Director Yarborough?
I was going to say, is now the, the time to talk about that one citizen that built his 20-year-old street?
No, we got a meeting question, he's still in attendance.
Yes, sir.
I'll kind of get in there.
Okay. Thank you.
That concludes our departmental reports. Next item on your agenda is miscellaneous items from the mayor, the board of aldermen, and the town administrator. Board, any miscellaneous items?
I've got just one. I had a couple citizens approach me about a code, a red bud code. Wes, I think we talked about this a little beforehand, they're just wanting to see about it being up to code. They believe that code is, it's kind of a street, it's not even really a code, but there, it's due for paving, and so they wanted to engage with public works and maybe codes about if they can bring that up to code and make it a proper, uh, turnaround, because currently the fire trucks, stuff like garbage trucks, stuff like that, can't even make it into the code properly. And that, and I'll get with y'all afterwards about, so the citizens, so that y'all can get your contact information for me.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everybody coming tonight, it makes all the difference. I apologize, I have to go, I'm not going to be here for your public comments, but I will look at them as soon as I can. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Any other board? Mr. Town Administrator?
We've got a special call meeting for the water and sewer budgets on the 26th at 6:00 PM. So that, tentatively scheduled to adopt those budgets for water and sewer and the sewer fees. July 4th committee meetings follow them, or the regularly scheduled committee meetings follow on July 4th. So I'm assuming that y'all want to reschedule, so y'all have to let me know what dates you want to reschedule those to. Some guidance on the budget would be nice.
I was going to say, we need to get some dates down for budget. I was gonna say, we need to get some dates down for budget. What, how, how long do we have to advertise and all that? When's, give us possible, earliest possible dates?
Well, if the board's gonna meet, um, to have another, yet another work session, um, we need usually at least forty-eight hours to give adequate notice for a meeting. You, you do have the special meeting that's advertised for the twenty-sixth at six P.M. for water and sewer. We can revise that public notice to, I believe, fiscal twenty-four budget. Uh, but that's, it needs to be advertised ten days, I believe it's ten days in advance of the final consideration. So now that the timeline's been adjusted, we're gonna have to act quickly.
Go ahead.
I'll be there any time this week.
Ms. Shaw, do we have the ability to not recess this meeting tonight? Can we just leave it open?
You can, and then, like we've done before, when we had certain deadlines coming up, and we have to announce the date of the next meeting tonight, and then continue it at that date.
Is that, we still need to follow under the, um...
We still need to publish it.
The publish, the publishing notice, so in other words, so not a, not adjourned tonight really doesn't serve it.
You would recess it instead of adjourn it, and, but you would announce the date and time that it will be reopened, and then we'd issue, we'd still issue notice, it could be more limited notice. Like, we could put it on the website, on Facebook, and at the places that the public tends to go.
But the bunch has already been voted on, so. Can you reopen a, something that's already been voted on?
You can amend the agenda to add any item.
So basically add it back to the...
We make about twenty-six, we're okay. Yeah. Because we've already had first reading.
If we recess till the twenty-sixth?
So, you're talking recessing that till the twenty-sixth, and then have a work session for any amendment? On it?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
With the call meeting for the twenty-sixth, I had not advertised it, uh, just yet, I was expecting to do that tomorrow, just in the event there was something else that needed to be added to that agenda?
I believe that's what's being discussed.
Okay, I couldn't hear you.
Yep.
Work session forty-eight hours?
About, I mean, what about next Tuesday for a work session? And then go ahead and advertise for a, another, for recess to be continued on the twenty-sixth. Or, I mean, even still, if it's not been published yet, we can go ahead and add it to the agenda for that night, and adjourn tonight, and it will be...
If we adjourn, we have to have two, uh, two meetings.
Okay.
I think it's adjourned. It's recessed, it just continues on this meeting, on the twenty-sixth.
Is that a review, recessed until the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what, when we get down to it, that's what we'll have to do.
Six o'clock?
Have to, yes, we'll have to figure a work session.
I thought that, I thought that was a special session.
No, the, the recess would be, uh, finally, the twenty-sixth.
We gotta advertise a work session.
Yeah. Add forty-eight hours would be good, too.
What's the, what's the advertising for a work session?
Adequate notice.
Adequate notice, generally, and, and I'm gonna defer to the town attorney, but I think generally adequate notice is at least forty-eight hours.
Agreed.
So what's work session?
What about next Tuesday, it's, it's six o'clock?
The twentieth, twentieth?
Yes, sir.
If it's closed Monday.
Yeah, closed Monday.
Okay, so what's the...
The, the, and the board can correct me, I believe we wanna advertise a work session. Everybody in attendance, y'all can spread the word, we're gonna have a work session about the budget on Tuesday the twentieth at six P.M. Encourage you to show up, listen to your government work. And then, there will be another reading, we already have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-sixth of June. There will be another reading for the budget to be approved on the twenty-sixth.
At six P.M.
At six P.M. So work session Tuesday the twentieth, six P.M. Final, or another readings, second reading on the twenty-sixth at six P.M.
Mayor, for the second reading of the sewer rates, do we need a public hearing at five forty-five?
I don't, I'll look to staff for that.
We can do, we can do, before we adopt the budget, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That'll, that'll be advertised. Okay, any other, uh, items from the board? I have nothing. Mr. Administrator? Do you have anything?
Yeah, I was just, uh, conversing with the town recorder, they were gonna have to advertise a public, another public hearing on the twenty-sixth as well. So it won't just be just a regular, regularly, well, another public hearing for those budgets are adopted.
For the...
Water, water sewer, water sewer, uh, whatever, whatever comes out of work sessions on the twentieth.
The...
For the general fund.
The general fund session shouldn't have to be public meeting, uh, public hearing again, because we're just recessing. We're recessing this to go back into session.
I'm confused.
Yeah.
If you adjourn this session, it starts back over. If we recess this to pick this same meeting back up on the twenty-sixth, we're back into this session.
I understood, you just said you were going to adjourn this.
No, 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 we're not gonna adjourn, because we'll have to have a first and second reading again.
If we adjourn.
If we adjourn, we have to have a first and second reading again.
If you adjourn the meeting, the meeting isn't over, and you start a brand-new meeting with a brand-new everything. If you recess this meeting and you open it back up on the twenty-sixth, and you want to address the budget, you can take it back up as if we are addressing it tonight, you can move to amend the agenda to take up a different, or amended budget.
Could you speak up, Andrew?
Sure. The difference in the adjournment and the recess is that the recess is a continuation of tonight's meeting on a different day. And the adjournment is the ending of this meeting and the beginning of another. And so that's what they were asking me for, for the difference between the two. And I think they are debating what they want as well.
They can have a work session in between?
They can.
Okay.
Okay, so...
She'll need a motion to recess.
Well, we got, we still got citizens' concerns and meeting questions. Ms. Lawyer?
No, 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 I'm not trying to skip that, I'm saying at some point someone needs to...
Yeah, I got a little emotion.
Yeah.
At some point, someone's got an emotion.
Let's skip that.
Okay, we have, uh, we arrived, uh, we have meeting questions, so in case you're not familiar with it, if you cannot attend in person, you can always, uh, send a question that you may have for the board or myself. Address it to Town Administrator, Meeting Question at Town...
Uh, yeah, Meeting Questions, I believe it's Meeting Questions at Town...
Meeting Questions at TownWithToka.com. So we're gonna start in no particular order, I've got several of those tonight, I think we talked about some of them. Uh, first one is from a Mr. Daniel Lee. He states, "How can the town justify a tax increase when apparently the town has plenty of money to provide money for grants and hire a consulting firm for On Track, but can't seem to provide the services that our taxes are supposed to be paying for, like paving Oak Creek Phase Two? Residents have been paying taxes since two thousand seventeen, subdivision, I believe, was finally accepted in two thousand twenty. The town seems to be able to provide raises of at least five percent this year, meanwhile, its residents are still hit with two years of eight percent inflation. I can't speak for everyone, but I'm sure not getting even a two percent raise, seems like there should be budget cuts and not tax raises. Respectfully, Daniel Lee." I have no idea what Mr. Lee's talking about, about providing money for grants. Uh, we do not, and we have not given any grants, uh, to Town with Toca. Mikey Mumford, they had a business development grant recently, honestly don't know what he's talking about. Hire a consulting firm for On Track, that was mentioned in the budget talks. We have started last year a twenty-year master plan for the town. So we're trying to get, instead of a haphazard, "Hey, this'd be a good place for a park, hey, this'd be a good place for a subdivision, what about putting some sidewalks?" We're getting a master plan, we had a lot of, uh, citizen input last year, uh, to go along with what they have proposed for us. We're gonna be changing our zoning ordinances to align with the vision, uh, that they're, they're laying down. And it's been a lot of citizen input, a lot of board members, uh, mayor, not only Mayor Walker, but myself. So that's what he's talking about, whenever you're On Track, uh, twenty forty-two, that is a twenty-year plan, master plan for the Town with Toca. Very well worth it, by the way. Um, he talks about paving, Oak Creek Phase Two, Mr. Lee does live, I believe, in Oak Creek Phase Two, and, um, we're gonna hold off on the paving, because I know we've got paving for Mossy Oak also. Uh, but there's, there's also something with the code that Mr. Lee lives in, and you wanna address anything with that? Attorney Shaw?
I can tell you, as far as the cul-de-sac project that we've been working on to get to the, um, final paving on that project, we are working with the different lenders that are involved to get them to release that portion that they need to, so that we can then pave it and improve it. And so we've been working on that, of course, working with those big lenders, you go through a lot of different components.
Just as a general, going back to paving, paving, we actually wanted to start last year. Uh, it was our plan to get that started in October...
September.
September, October, we had trouble with a paving company that had contracted, um, we weren't real pleased with them at all. Then we got to a point, Mayor Man, I know asphalt plants shut down for the winter, and that's why your paving's being delayed. Uh, it is now, as you know, uh, started up, but in a, in a big twenty-thousand-foot level, it was actually supposed to be done September, October, one phase of it, not necessarily what we're doing right now. I think I got that well done. Ms. Wanda Bates, Ms. Wanda was here tonight, she's, I don't know if she's still here. She says, "The town has said they make no revenue from trash service, so how are they able to move money from that fund to the general fund?" This is an example, the town has never said that we do not make money from revenue. When we first contracted garbage service, um, it was several reasons. One of them, the main one, was to keep ten different garbage company trucks off of our streets and tearing our streets and our road tub. We now have one company, uh, that, and we, we also have better control, uh, as far as one throat to choke, if you will, if we have a problem with that. We were able to provide a cheaper service, because when we go to a garbage company and we say we can give you three thousand, uh, clients versus you contracting them directly, they give us a better rate. So there is money that is made from that revenue, you've heard tonight. Um, and I know Mr. Bill's also got a question that we're gonna go over. Uh, we are able to transfer, uh, certain money at certain times to the general fund, where we can pay for nine-one-one service, maintenance on vehicles, police bulletproof vests, et cetera, et cetera. That will be going down, we have a three-year contract, year two, year three. We, we want to keep your rates the same for all three, but our costs will be going up, so you will see a decrease in the amount of money that is transferred. But, the statement that the town has said they make no revenue for trash service, that's never been said. If it was said, whoever said it was in error, or didn't know what they were talking about. Mr. Bill, since we're talking about that, uh, William Austin, three seventy-two. "I questioned the town manager, Ms. Debbie, about this, I was told the transfer, talking about the trash money transfer, is made to cover time utilized by town staff to deal with solid waste concerns. I asked how much of their time is spent dealing with solid waste issues? The town manager, Ms. Debbie, said they did not have that information. Ms. Debbie said that the solid waste fund could only be used on solid waste concerns. If that is true, why is ninety-five, one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, that's enough to pay four full-time employees? Do they need four employees to handle solid waste concerns?" Mr. Town Administrator, you wanna, you were mentioned in that? Or if any board member wants to talk to the...
I guess not.
So I mean, I don't know if you...
Yeah.
What I've already said about the revenue and, but...
And that's really the long and short of it, we handle all the calls, we've got software involved, as, as we just had that agreement tonight for local government. Uh, we got numerous personnel involved from time to time, delivering cans, picking up cans, handling trash concerns. Uh, so those, those salaries and fees, uh, and costs are covered by the solid waste, and any of the positive revenues transferred from solid waste to the general fund. And those transfers help offset any additional need to create additional revenue through property taxes.
That is correct. Going back to paving, uh, Mr. Matthews. Mossy Oak's never had one and a half inch final layer put on it, the street's over twenty years old. Paving this layer is supposed to take place soon after the building is complete. The street has bulldozer tracks webbing, cracking, many of the driveways are two to three inches above the pavement, causing the driveway edges to deteriorate, be very, very rough driving in and out. We've been on the paving schedule several times in the past, where we were bumped for other projects. If our street's bad enough to make the list before, and it certainly hasn't gotten better with time, why is it not on the current schedule? The residents of our streets are all subject to taxes, new taxes, but we don't seem to be benefiting from paying them. I will let Director Yarborough weigh in on anything he wants to. I can say, Mr. Matthews, that the current list of streets was created by our previous public works director, Harvey Ellis. I don't believe anybody on the board or myself has anything to, you know, we do not really put an input on that. I guess we could, if we were driving around and noticed stuff, but that was created by the previous public works administrator. Again, it was supposed to be September, October. Mr. Director Yarborough, you need to come up to the podium if you wanna answer anything. But basically, what can we do about Mossy Oak?
I'd like...
If anything?
Yes, sir, I, I mean, we could definitely take a look at it once we get paving done, and so we have anything left, I have talked to Wayne, if we have maybe anything left. Uh, like I talked with him earlier a couple of weeks ago, I promised to try to get it on the paving list, but hopefully that'll be probably first part of next year.
So the contract that we're operating under right now is for a certain amount of footage?
Yes, sir, certain amount of footage, a certain amount of...
Asphalt, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
If they finish up and there are, there is some surplus?
Yes, sir.
We could definitely look at Mr. Matthews. Can you go into a little about how do you get on the paving scale, what streets, what's, what's determined to put somebody on, hey, this street's gotta be repaid?
I know, and like I said, I'm just going by, with, with previous, Mr. Harvey, uh, they had made a list, uh, and graded the streets. And I think they took the very worst ones, from my understanding, and made the list. And that's basically what I've been going by as well, too, so that list was already made, and the paving's already going. And like I said, definitely, we'll definitely try to get them on the list, for sure. I, I don't know the promises in the past, I just know what I can do in the future.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
You say start of next year, that's just like July one?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes.
This will be...
This will be, yes, sir.
Not January next year?
No.
So, Mr. Matthews, keep us informed.
Yes, sir.
Reach out to me.
Please call me.
This is the first, this is the first I've heard of it, I've been on board five years, and I live right around the corner from you on Beverly. Hold on, hold on.
Yes, sir.
I just said, I live right around the corner from you on Beverly, so when I saw your, your, your email, I was like, there's no way, he's right behind me, and, you know, and of course you were, you were right. But I, uh, I, I've never, this is the first I've heard of it, and so, uh, again, any citizen...
It's very short streets, there are eight driveways, so I don't know what's...
So, I know it's not, you know, right on everybody's radar, but, you know...
And you are, this is not an excuse, Mr. Matthews, but that's a great point. Traffic count definitely pays a roar in the grading of where it gets done.
It's more about the fact that the street has never been finished.
Yes, yeah.
The quality of the street.
Yes.
True. I've been in the business for over 40 years. I've never seen a street that wasn't finished paved within three or four years of substantial construction being finished.
I agree.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And I'm pretty sure if I look through the code books, that's probably in there somewhere. Substantial construction, finished street, it hasn't been done.
I mean, I know usually before we accept subdivision, it's, yeah, it's definitely laid out. So, that's on us. So, but Mayor, TownofAtoka.com, Alderman, yes, sir?
I appreciate it.
Another question from Wanda Bates. This is talking about the Industrial Development Board. What will the $100,000 for the Industrial Development Board be used for? So, the Industrial Development Board can contract to maybe buy a piece of property. If a developer is interested, they could have like first contact. As the town administrator alluded to, we put in, we're trying to create money for the Industrial Development Board to be able to do things like that and to be able to make a deal with a developer as far as a commercial entity or something. Eventually, they would pay us back. The Mumford IDB went for like three to five years before they started seeing revenue. Now, they're seeing massive revenue back to the Town of Millington. Now, the nice thing is, of course, you bring somebody in, commercial-wise, and they open up shop, that's new jobs, that's new revenue from day one that they're in business for us. She said, "People sit on the board." We got a consulting session with the gentleman as the chairman of the Millington Industrial Development Board. And there's a recommendation as far as certain businesses, like they like to have a banker. They like to have a Realtor. They like to have a chamber of commerce person. We have appointed six people. So far, we're looking for one more. And I can tell you, those six people are Charles Ennis of Patriot Bank, Dr. Ken Larkin of Atoka Family Dentistry, Matt, what's Matt's last name?
Cox.
Cox, Matt Cox of the Chamber, former Mayor Darryl Walker, Jimmy Craig. I'm forgetting one person.
Deanna Webb.
Deanna Webb, she's a Realtor. So, those are the people that are currently appointed to the board. They're just now, they're going to be meeting like at the end of this month.
Mayor, can I also just interject here and allude? The IDB is a separate functioning entity for legal purposes.
Correct.
And it does things that the town cannot do. It can buy and hold property. It can negotiate different sets of contracts. And it can be specifically assigned to develop industrial businesses. And so, by Atoka creating an IDB, we had to loan the IDB money with the customary intent that all of that would be repaid and that it would be profitable as a separate entity.
Thank you. And that will be something that will be taken up at the work session, whether that stays in the budget or not. Ms. Bates also says, "The money for infrastructure repairs is coming from the American Rescue Plan." She's talking about the $1.5 million that we allotted for paving. She said, "What is the plan to maintain the roads and other infrastructure once that money is gone?" On average, the board of Mayor and Alderman sets back about $300,000 every budget for paving. We upped it in this budget to 325. That'll be something that'll have to be debated at the work session. But to answer Ms. Bates' question, the annual money that we've always allocated to roads, it's usually around $300,000 for that. I have a two-part meeting question. One of them is a statement, it's not really a question. The first one is, "How come, I don't know this gentleman, he didn't sign it." It says, "W. Galli 4348 at Yahoo.com. How come we as seniors, he's retired and 80 years old, living on a fixed income, don't have available to us a homestead exemption?" This town recorder, do you want to tell? There is some type of exemption for, talking about, I believe, tax relief.
I'm not certain what a homestead exemption is.
We don't call it that. We've got some other program, this one...
A tax relief program.
We have a tax release program. So, we don't know if that's what this gentleman's referring to. But there is such a program, tax relief? And could you go over?
It is for single bedrooms, widows. There's four categories.
They come in, fill a form out?
We've got the information they fill out for them.
Okay.
If they have not participated before, then it goes to the state for approval. And they have to fall under a certain income level. I think it's $29,000. And we'll be going to a tax relief training seminar in July.
And then, part two of Mr. W. Galli 4348 is the homestead. This is a statement. The homestead exemption in Tennessee is a joke. The current limits for homestead is joke. Look at Texas, Arkansas, Oklahoma, and Florida as an example. So, we'll do that. Okay. Citizens' Concerns tonight. I have first person here. Is it you, Mr. Bill? William, no, William Anderson, 452 Beverly Drive.
Question for your lawyer. Under state law, who has dominance, castle law or town law?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
If someone comes on my property, and I don't care who it is, that's my private property, isn't it? Under castle law, the only person who can come on my property is a first responder. That's what I read. Anybody else is trespassing, and I have the right to pull a gun and arrest them. That's what the law says, I believe.
So, you have federal law that has certain jurisdiction. You have Tennessee law that has state jurisdiction. And you have county ordinances and city ordinances that all are law.
But a city ordinance or county ordinance can't overdo the castle, the state law.
If there is a conflict between the two, that has to be taken up by the municipality.
Okay. This international...
As we've already heard, code enforcement has the right to come on his property.
I looked up this international resident company. They're a left-wing communist takeaway woke-type company that wants to take my rights and my private property and give it to the town.
Who is international resident company?
The code.
Oh, the code we have here?
The International Building Code?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
It's a left-wing woke company. They want to take our rights away. Number two, I have a letter here that you got that he wrote a ticket on for a car. It was up there. He said, "The top left car." That belongs to an autistic, fully functional 29-year-old. He didn't tell his dad that he didn't put the sticker on the car. He doesn't have access to police records. He didn't know that that's a fully registered vehicle. The only person who can touch that car and give it a ticket is a police officer.
No, sir. If the tag is expired, it is not registered.
It wasn't expired.
It's the old license plate, sir. It had to be expired. It was the old license plate that expired January of this year.
It wasn't an old plate. It didn't have a sticker on it.
Code enforcement? Mayor, Zach?
Let me jump in here to...
Yeah, your time's expired, too, sir, but we'll go ahead.
But just to the extent that the citation has been issued, there's a procedure to appeal that in order to maintain not only the decorum of the meeting and prevent a lot of back and forth, but to maintain the integrity of that appeal process. The appeal process is laid out in city ordinances, and then it should be through the municipal judge.
And I talked to one gentleman that said that the tag was expired. And he was very polite and said, "That's been taken care of." I don't know if that's a separate...
That's who he is.
Okay.
And he's making up his own, he was talking about the fences tonight.
Yes, sir.
It says $50 in your new code. But it doesn't say what $50 or when they're paid. It doesn't say if the fence falls down and I got to repair it. It doesn't say when I first put the fence up. That code, he's interpreting in his own way. He's taking my right away from me to fix that on my own.
Okay, sir. Mr. William, he's only doing what the board has laid out in our ordinance. So, you heard tonight. I think there's going to be discussion about kind of refining that ordinance. And there'll be a work session that'll be advertised, and you can feel free to shill it.
Because about 50% of those fines that are in there are generic. You can, I mean, they're all resolution. I don't know.
Sir.
My computer says resolution is not a law.
A resolution is a town-adopted procedure. And so, when the town adopts it, it becomes binding on the citizens within the jurisdiction of the town.
Right. But resolution means a firm decision to do or not to do something.
It can, in the dictionary sense.
Mr. William, you had two minutes, and you've way expired. So, thank you, sir. Mr. Bill Austin, you are up for Citizens' Concerns.
My question, you'll get answered.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wanda Bates? It's like Ms. Bates, don't stick around. Nancy Langley?
She looks like...
Okay. Can you read that name? Colonial 161 Colonial Woods.
Matthew, last name Matthew?
It's not Mr. Matthews.
That's how you've been to Mossy Oak, gentlemen.
Well, this is, yeah, it could be. Okay.
Yeah, because Paul, he knows it.
All right.
Is that like Clay Matthews or Arnold Matthews, something like that?
It just looks like Matthews. Pamela Givens, 588 Williamsburg. This is Ben.
Hi. Couple of things, when you were talking about the grant. I know a few years ago, because I kind of took a, you know, that Town of Atoka was giving out grants. Now, I haven't looked at the budget over the last few years, so I don't know if that was taken out. But I think that's what that gentleman was referring to. Because it kind of took me back, like, they're increasing taxes, but they're giving out free money, like... But I never said anything. But I think that's one of your, Daniel Lee, I think it was.
Yes, he's the one that mentioned grant.
Yeah.
We have no grants, so we don't have any...
We did a few years, because I saw it, too. It said grant, and I forget.
Do we give donations to some...
Donations.
Do they be charitable donations? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I think at one point it was called grants, now it's donation. I think that's what he's referring to, but...
Well, that's, thank you, ma'am, because that very much could be it.
Because basically, you're giving away our taxpayer money and then saying, "Well, we got to raise your taxes." So, I think that's where he's coming from. I kind of get that, like, if you've got money to give away, then you shouldn't be raising our taxes. I think that's the mindset. But I'm just speculating.
Okay.
Just because it raised my eyebrows. Second thing is, like, he was talking about the fees. And I saw a car with some flat tires. And I thought, "How many potholes have I hit that'll get some flat tires that I may not be able to fix right away?" So, they, I can't put it in my driveway because the tires are flat. But the good state of Tennessee doesn't fit, fix all their stupid potholes. Like, so I can get a ticket for that? Because I got some flat tires on my car?
If it stays there a while, like, do you have time? If you can give it some time and you get it fixed? No, ma'am. If it's there for six months, of course, you could have got those flat tires.
So, he writes down the day he saw it and then comes back in four months, and if it's still...
I think it would probably be if one of your neighbors made a call into Town Hall about that.
Okay. And lastly, on our water bill, like, they were showing the increase for the water.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's showing meter size. Does my water bill tell me my meter size? Where do I find out what my meter size is?
I believe all residential houses have that first category, 5/8s, John?
Three-quarter, five-quarter, 5/8s.
Three-quarters or 5/8s.
So, mine would automatically be three-quarter, 5/8s?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's what a normal house, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Brett Pickard?
In lieu of time, I'm going to yield my time for next time, but I'd like to make two quick points. So, I thank y'all who listened to the Taxpaying Citizens. And the police chief said he was going to be shorter than the fire chief. That's obvious.
Rick and Nancy Weiner, I think they got up and left. I saw them leave. Ms. Lisa Noel, 350 Stephen Hill. Mr. Jesse Poole, 566 Main Street.
Real quick here, but I got to refer to the chiefs over here. That sound like a men.
And you were doing that. For those of y'all that are not aware, this is our previous police chief, Jesse Poole. He's referring back to the previous fire chief.
I just, positive thing. There've been a lot of things said tonight, but thank you. Anyway, Saturday, there was a pick-up litter day in Atoka. It wasn't mentioned here tonight. But I wish more people were in this room. Because if we really want to help the town, that's one thing we can do when they do those, is come and join that. I had fun my first time, well, my first time to submit. But I had, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Regina Prescott, 280 Duncan Drive.
Thanks you spoke earlier, Mayor.
Yeah. Joseph, 275 Elizabeth Drive. Joseph somebody. Donna Harden, 72 Harper Street. Ms. Donna.
I just had two things. One, I wanted to confirm that the meeting on the 26th, there will be another vote...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I turned on low. I just want to confirm that the meeting on the 26th, there will be another vote on the budget and the tax increase.
I don't think they've motioned to recess versus adjourn the meeting. I think there was discussion between the Alderman and...
I'm saying, if it's recessed, there will be another vote.
That's my understanding, but you might...
There'll be a work session on the 20th, and then the vote will be on the 26th, yes, ma'am.
And my other concern was some of the comments and remarks that have been made tonight. I don't know about everybody else, but I have three children and a full-time job and a full-time husband that's another full-time job. So, when I'm not present, it's for a reason. It's not to be part of my community, which is what most of these people out here and watching online are. So, when we elect our elected officials to represent us, we fully expect you to represent us to the full capacity that you have available and not necessarily demean us for not being able to be here all the time.
There was no demeaning mentioned, ma'am.
It may not have been met.
That's why we...
It may not have been met, but that's how it came across.
Okay, I apologize for that.
So, I'm just saying.
I just get excited when I see citizens involved in the government.
I have full faith in my government. But when you see 20,000 people, I'm exaggerating, of course. Out here, it's because some of that faith has been lost.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see this every month, as far as citizens. But we do stream, so you don't have to physically show up. And you can still participate through that. All right, Guzman, 711 Duncan Drive. All right, Ms. Stephanie Borman, 125 Atkinson Circuit.
Oh, you don't really run here for me, do you?
Come on up to the podium, Ms. Stephanie.
Okay, this is my problem. I've lived in a house since 1980. And I was just shown how there were changes made to the building inspection thing. Am I going to have to come in here every six months and find out what changes have been made so I know how to follow them? Oh, by the way, I'm going to become tall meetings anyway, but, you know.
The, I believe the changes to...
Anything.
Building codes.
The building code, yeah. I mean, my house has been there since before the building code existed.
You're going to have to pull another permit to live in your house, no?
I understand that.
I mean, if you was to tear one end of the building down, you're going to have to...
Okay, I got, I got, me and Mr. Mark Galli kind of had a discussion not too long ago. But we got a note on our house because we had a trailer in the yard that had a... but we got a note on our house because we had a trailer in the yard that had a washing machine in it that we had to replace, okay? The washing machine was sitting in the trailer in the yard. It had been there for two weeks. That was too long. We just got through replacing the roof, cleaning up two trees that fall down, fell down, and then somebody shows up to complain about a trailer sitting in the yard with a washing machine. Excuse me, okay? That's why I was mad. But I need to know, you know, it's, it's almost impossible to figure out what you're supposed to do and what you're not supposed to do, if it's going to change every six months.
Well, you can always call the code gentleman, and he will be more than happy to give you guidance.
Oh, he told me that he's, he's here from 8:00 to 5:00, but he's usually not here because he's out somewhere else doing something.
You can leave him a message, and I guarantee you he'll be back.
Okay. Maureen? I can handle Maureen.
Thank you, ma'am. And that completes our citizen concerns. So we have to go into a motion for closed session for legal advice, and that's what I need a motion for at this time.
I make a motion to recess into closed? Is that what we need to do? Recess into closed session?
Ms. Amber, he's looking at you.
I'm thinking, I think you just make a motion to move into closed session, and then you make a motion to...
Make a motion to move into closed session.
So we will ask y'all to step out, and you are welcome to stand and wait, and when we are done with our legal...